Under the ground soon.
Yeah. Yeah, when the ground quits freezing and something start to grow. Think there's enough moisture to bring some stuff, so. You're going to uh. W I R in first in Yosemite.
I am.
Good.
There's also a. Something happening in price. Is it the uranium or the rare earth stuff?
Oh, I don't know, Mac, is there something going on in price with rare earth or something?
It's a it's the eastern regional.
Oh.
Meeting that they have every year.
Energy conference or something?
Yeah, it's just for their county and so I stopped going after the second time. So we signed him up.
Good. Then UAC at the end of the month.
Yeah, I'll sign up for that one.
Okay. I don't know about that building conference. I think that's pretty much for Todd.
Yeah, yeah, we usually go to that um. It's good meeting with to meet with you Doc. For me, that's easily where I go to. Get all the information. We met with him yesterday as well. And so. Jared, he's moving up in the ranking. And so he brought his replacement out of Richfield. That'll kind of help oversee and then you got Chris underneath him that we go.
What about uh Rick Torres and is he still? Over the Richmond office?
Or is it Marlon? Marlon, isn't it Marlon? Marlon. He's still there. Jared just moved up into the different spot and so. There's the baby.
There's the attorney. Her feet are sticking out.
They wiggle too much.
She does that nonstop and she'll kick them off. She sits there and I mean not on purpose, but she rubs her feet together. And then they fall off, so then I just lose them. So I'm one step ahead of the game and I'm worried about it.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started here. I think we're all systems go.
We're good.
Okay. Right then, we'll call this meeting to order for the Commissioner, San Juan County Commission at eleven oh two A M. Like to welcome everyone to our commission meeting. Can you scroll that down for me, Matt?
Oh, where where do you want to go?
Top, top, top part. Just looking at, there we go. Okay, all right. So roll call. Then do roll call. Commissioner Adams is here. Mr. Stubbs, are you here?
I'm here, I think I'm here.
Okay, all right. Attorney Britten, he's also here with her assistant. And uh, okay, so we'll move on to our next item, which is to provide an invocation. And uh, I think I seen Commissioner Adams just invite. Uh, anyone who's willing to be a brave soul to provide a invocation to our meeting, so. Anyone feel like? Being holy today and blessing our meeting?
I said it last time, but I can say it again.
Oh, you did not, I did.
What, did you?
Cool, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Amen.
Thank you much, Nicole. Let's go and do our pledge of allegiance.
Hi, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on with our agenda to conflict of interest disclosure, commissioners. No, no conflict from Commissioner Adams.
I had none.
No commis- no conflict from Commissioner Stubbs. I reviewed all the items, so I also don't have any conflict with any items on our agenda today. So um, moving on to our public comment section, I'll defer to our administrator, Matt.
Okay, we only have one online and nobody had signed up. On the sheet for public comments, not seeing anybody in the room wishing to make a public comment. Unless Daryl, Daryl, do you want to make a public comment? Daryl's always here. He's our. He's our one of our most dependable. Online participants and so not seeing him unmute, so that's your public comment period for today.
Okay, moving on with our agenda to consent agenda items. Looks like there's five, Mac.
Okay. So on your, under your consent agenda item, you have the first item is approval of the February fifteenth through twenty. The twenty sixth of twenty twenty four, check registers. You have the approval and appointment of Andy Bayless to San Juan Counseling Board for a four-year term beginning January twenty twenty four, representing Blinding area. You have the approval of the letter of introduction from the commission to the indigenous community in support of the housing assessment. This is from our consultant to kind of help him learn and understand a little bit more. About the housing needs within the Navajo Nation and in the U tribe as well. Then item number four is the approval of the San Juan County Health Department agreement with the state of Utah Health and Human Services Department. For S T D D disease intervention services twenty nineteen amendment number six. Then you have the approval of the San Juan County Health Department agreement with the state of Utah Health and Human Services Department for the H I V prevention twenty twenty three amendment number two. That commissioners is your consent agenda for today.
Okay, commissioners, how would we?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Adams.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Stubbs. Any comments, commissioners?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's three in favor, unanimous for our consent agenda. Moving on to recognition, presentation and information items.
Okay, we were gonna have a presentation by poet laureate Kelly Green. Not seeing Kelly here, he was. Stopped by last commission meeting. I would hold off on this item and let's see if he'll, if he shows up.
Okay, so just.
So if not, we can turn some time over to Nicole, she can explain the program.
Okay. All right.
We'll 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 see if he pops in.
All right, uh, let's go ahead and do our business and action items then. Uh, we'll go to number seven.
Okay, item seven is the consideration approval of the twenty twenty four San Juan County Rural Grant Funding Allocation. This is presented by Elaine, our director for Economic Development Visitor Services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The uh, county economic development board spent hours, probably eight hours. Commissioner Stubbs knows that to just to go through all of the applications that we received, which was over a million. Three in uh, requests, grant funding requests. So they uh, went through all the applications and um. Allocated the hundred and seventy-five thousand to the attached um, businesses. So we had in Monticello, we allocated thirty, about thirty-eight thousand to businesses. LaSalle was sixty-seven. That's the first time we've really focused on businesses in LaSalle and um. Hopefully can help those businesses. Uh, Blanding got almost eleven thousand. San Juan County, two businesses got about thirty-five thousand and then in Bluff. Twenty, almost twenty-four thousand was allocated. So for a hundred and seventy-five thousand. They went through and. Based on a conversation I had with um, uh, James Dixon out of the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity and Collette Cox. Um, they wanted us to really take a look at businesses where we would be allocating, but those funds would be coming back. What would they generate for the county? And that that's the goal, not just to give the funds and not anticipate anything, but how? How can those funds help to bring back transient, in transient room tax, sales tax, employees, whatever? So these are the twelve. Applicants who received funding. Um, they, they ask, you can see what they asked for and then what was approved. So it's a really great program. I only hope that next year we can get four hundred thousand. Um, based on. You know, our community and the requests that we have, because there were so many um, businesses that. Could use the funding, so, but I think the decisions that they made are really great.
Elaine, was Indian Creek Ranch for the research center down there or?
No, no, that is a um, um, short-term rental where that's here in San Juan County. Mm-hmm, and that Joe Tosca owns that particular property and he, Indian Canyon Ranch, and he did all his upgrades. Based on planning and zoning and the health department and everything. He applied last year and didn't receive anything, but. He made all those, met all those requirements, so he was funded this year.
I just want to make a comment. I think that was one of the hardest things to do. You see lots of dreams, lots of, lots of hope from people. And then you had to um. You know, make selection and we decided one way and then we. Start running out of money and then we go back and start chopping, chopping, chopping and. And us, you know, I was from Blanding, but you can see. It, in the last few minutes, we're able to save something for Blanding, but. I, I'm glad about the communities that we have helped. I think they're. You know, they're good things and so hopefully, like you say, we can help some of the other business in this way or another way. Because there's some, lots of, lots of good ideas, but it, it was hard. I just.
Yeah, it is. It's not easy.
Because you just get, you know, you just see. They see the possibility, they see the. There are their dreams and you can, you can see they can work, but you know, we don't have the money, like you say. We look at the ones that will bring the most. Benefit, increase taxes and.
Right, and and obviously the transient room tax generation where we're investing back into businesses. That are going to help us to generate more transient room tax, um, that, that's important.
And so as we went, we kind of trying to help business that would start generating those things faster than. And so hopefully we can. You know, find other sources that we can help some of the other businesses and.
Well, I think the key is if we can get the legislators to give or find a way. Because every county's allocated two hundred thousand, it doesn't matter. But I think they need to, the state needs to look at how, you know, the poverty level of the counties and.
Well, and the.
The challenges that the counties have and say, gee, maybe, you know, two hundred thousand, maybe they need four hundred thousand.
Realizes our situation, you know, like I was talking to somebody. From my organization, I don't want to name it, but was asking me what are the consequences? For us having the bearseer in our community, around our community, and I said, well, we don't have funds. They cannot provide funds for us to, you know, for rescue, uh, you know, rescue them and for all this stuff and that's costing us money. So I think the legislature need to take in a, um, into account that. Areas like us and Scalante area and all the area. We draining our, our budget trying to help when we have more tourists in the area. And there, you know, they hurt more and ambulance service, we have all these types of so. It, I think it um, it pays off sometimes when you can answer those question. And for us to be more informers, we go to the legislature to say. You know. Things that can help us, so, but anyway.
Well, very good. Uh, just need a motion, commissioners.
Can I make a motion? We ratified the, the uh, list that has been presented. I would like to say. It's a difficult process to instruct the legislature on what they need to do.
I know. I, I, I feel your pain. A lot of it.
You go there full of hope, everybody's happy, cheerful, everybody saying hi to each other and then the. I, I belong to another. Uh, the seven county commission and we got hit hard in that hurts. And so, anyway, so then we come, defeat or transfer, how are we gonna do our next year, but you know?
Maybe they could figure something out, you know, with the baseball stadium and tack on San Juan County somehow, since we won't. Benefit from the transient room tax, they could.
Uh, Wilcox, is he a senator or a congressman, representative? He walked into trying to talk to all the. Commissioners. And you have one side. I need to buy my cowboy hat, with the cowboy hats, the cowboy cactus, and they're talking about this um, the baseball. Stadium. And so it is kind of a. Because he come and said the train is leaving the station. Basically, you guys want to be with us or you get left. And so in the end, I guess we did get some benefit. Of taxes for being small counties, but yeah, just have to, we need to sign how. And that's the reason we get team up together, county, small county, that's the only way we can accomplish anything is to. Be happy when somebody gets something, maybe next year they'll get something.
Well, don't get me wrong, I'm thrilled with the two hundred thousand they provide us, but always want to ask for more for San Juan County.
No, I think you're right, we need to ask for more, but.
Commissioner Stubbs, any other comments other than thank you for the work? Let's all vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three in favor, unanimous approval.
Uh, I, I, I'm really thrilled for these businesses. No, it isn't. It's really tough decision.
Okay, moving on to our next item.
Yep, the next one is consideration and approval of. Grant recipients twenty twenty-four rural grant memorandum of understanding. This is what will be signed.
Yes, um, we, over the last uh, few years that uh, we have distributed funds since I've been here. We've had a couple of situations that um, caused me to reflect and go back and say we need to have something. In um, in more of a legal document that will help. With this money that we're granting uh, to ensure that it's really going to help the county. We did have an opportunity last year, we granted funds to a particular business. And then a year later, the business is being sold, so we, we don't want to do, that's just one example. So the memorandum of understanding is something that these grant recipients must sign in order to receive the funding. If they don't sign it, they won't get the funding. Um, and if they read through this, um, you'll see it, it does ensure that. That they have a license, that they, you know, cannot sell the business for three years, because if we're investing in that business with the funds. We need that business to s- to s- to stay there, so uh, the uh, said board went through this as well. Added their comments and this was the final document. So we'll, once um. This is approved, then we'll be sending that out to the recipients and asking them to sign this legal document. And then if they don't sign it, the money will come back and we'll go back to possibly reallocate if no one agrees.
I like, I like this and I like the idea to um, especially if you people don't know the place.
Right.
And when we were trying to allocate higher numbers. I kept thinking, what would keep them from walking away if it's not working? But if they can invest some of their. You know, they have something invested from their part, then they're. Maybe they're not walking away so soon.
Two key things, we raised the limit to fifty thousand that they could apply for. And um, we also require that they have a match this year, that they have skin in the game. So that it really helps the county. So I think those are, you know, were two important things.
And we learn as we go too.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's exactly why we have the memorandum of understanding, so.
This is really good.
This also gives me the authority to sign them instead of bringing them back to commission for each signature. Then it would drop down to my level and then.
Did you say Brittany has looked at this and approved it?
I had sent it over to the attorneys. Yeah, I was in Munich code for, I don't know, a month, I think, so.
You know what we're talking about, Brett? Can I make a motion? We approve.
Motion by Commissioner Adams to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Stubbs. Any other comments, commissioners? Hearing none.
Thank you so much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this next one is consideration and approval of the Community Library Enhancement Fund Grant Contract. Between San Juan County and the State of Utah Department of Community and Cultural Engagement. Nicole, our library services director.
And then if Kelly doesn't show up, I can give some basics on the poet laureate. And the Community Library Enhancement Fund, it is a state grant. Uh, it's commonly known as the CLEF grant. We receive this usually every year from the state library. And it's used to supplement uh, collection development, technology for public use. Programming such as pu- um, community outreach programs or any programs sponsored by the libraries. It can also be used for retrofitting library buildings for A D A compliance, but if that is what we intend to use it for. Then there needs to be um, approval before that project begins. Also for minor capital projects, such as updating the furniture and the carpet paint, minor repairs. In the past, this has been approved. This year we were awarded seven thousand eighteen. So we're just seeking the approval of the commissioners and their signature and.
Commissioners?
If you have any questions, I can answer those.
You guys do lots of good things at the library. It is a good place for moms and childrens and adult. I mean, lots of the people retiree, they don't, they cannot afford the internet, so they spend lots of. Time there, getting up with the news and it's very welcoming place too.
It's a good center for the community often.
It is really good and they get used by. Children after school, I mean, they come there, so.
Yes, quite a bit.
So that's a motion.
I'll pass the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Stubbs, second by Commissioner Adams. Any other comments? None, no comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, just three in favor. All approve. Okay, next one.
Thank you so much.
This one here is the consideration and approval of the Children and Teen Book Enhancement Federal Mini Grant between San Juan County and the State of Utah Department of Community and Cultural Engagement.
Okay, this is a contract for um, three thousand dollars that they actually, actually both these are. Funds that were forwarded to us and then we are accountable to them afterwards. Anyway. They, uh, it's three thousand dollars that we have been awarded to purchase current high-quality, well-reviewed books that were published between the years of twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-four. They have lists and links that are specific that we have to purchase from, except, although there are exceptions that if there's something not on the list that we'd like. We can get approval to purchase those. We do have to, uh, with both grants, show documentation. In the past, they've approved it. It's, we've received this grant a number of times. And it's, the purpose is to enhance the youth and children printed collections for circulation.
Need a motion, commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second by Commissioner Stubbs, second by Commissioner Adams. Comments, commissioners?
I just want to thank you for all you do and for all your workers and.
Yeah, yeah, good, good staff.
Fun going there, I wish.
Yeah, everybody's welcome. We want everyone to feel welcome to come, as long as they behave. And then I don't know, do you, what do you want to do, Mac, about? Oh, sorry, yep, sorry.
All right, all in favor? Three in favor.
Nicole, since you have some duties tonight. Mind us, what time will start?
So officially, the doors open at six thirty, but I think most people will be there at six o'clock. Um, for the various precincts. And you have to bring your voter I D, just remember that. They will not let you participate if you don't have your voter I D or state issued I D. Where we. You can pre-register in line. Oh, one thing uh, keep in now is the state. Republican Party has something called the Precinct Portal Finder. Precinctportal.org or precinctfinder.org. It is not accurate, especially for our county. Especially for the southern communities and the northern, like it's LaSalle. So, and they actually had my husband living in a trailer car somewhere, so. Um, when I, I'm like, oh, I need to bring him home. So I am, I went to Utah. Vote dot Utah dot gov. It is very accurate. Um, I was able to get my husband back home through it. It's vote dot Utah dot gov. Now I ju- I, yeah, or there, there's probably several ways to get there. And you'll need your first name, last name, address and birth date, and then you can pre-register there. Or you can do it from the, the portal as well, but that way you're assured that they've got you in the right place, in the right precinct. It'll tell you the precinct and from there, there um, yeah, there is on our Facebook page. There are locations there and also phone numbers to contact people. Your people, anybody's welcome to contact me if they have questions on where to. Where they need to meet, where their precinct is, so.
So there is a potential for voter fraud tonight?
We hope not. Well, I think there's potential for voter fraud anytime, but it's gonna be minimal. I know a lot of people are gonna complain and say, yeah, I'm your neighbor, why do I have to show my I D? Well, we, we can't discriminate on this. We have to be consistent with everybody, so. Anyway.
All of the precincts in Monticello are meeting at one place?
Yes, they are all meeting at the Monticello High School in the auditorium.
They do that in Blanding too or not?
Um, well, we're a little bit bigger, so we have it and we have three different districts. So there's the elementary, the elementary cafeteria for Blanding District Three Precinct. And there is the middle school cafeteria for Blanding District One Precinct. And the library, the Blanding Library for Blanding District Two Precinct. And then in Bluff, we have um, the Bluff Precinct and we've adopted. We have two more precincts in the south, Navajo Nation District One and Navajo Nation District Two Precinct. And we, we've, for the past ten years, we've really struggled trying to get, we've really tried, we've called, we've tried to get organized, but we didn't want to just leave them out. So we've invited them and asked other precincts to adopt them for the night to come, so they can vote. And hopefully they'll get organized tonight and have their own precinct. And let, uh, let's see, so Blanding District, Navajo Nation, I'm sorry if this is taking too much time. Navajo Nation District Two Precinct is meeting with Blanding. Precinct, Blanding District Two Precinct at the library. They're invited there. And then Bluff has invited the Navajo Nation District Three Precinct to meet with them at the, it's in a residence and there's an address that's listed there. And then we also have one more precinct that includes LaSalle and Spanish Valley, and they will be meeting at the LaSalle Community Center. And so, there's also, spread the word, there's, if people can't make it, there's a way to vote absentee as well. So everyone's voice can be heard. It's gonna be a little tricky. It's very different this year. They're trying to do a lot of stuff digitally, which is gonna be interesting, so.
Are they trying to make it harder to vote or easier?
Um, I think, in some ways, it's easier, but it's harder to get onto the learning curve, especially for maybe generations that, like my mother-in-law, for instance, doesn't even have an email. So we're gonna have to figure that out, how she gets her QR code to be scanned in, we'll figure it out. But in other ways, my personal feeling is a lot of the control, it feels like the state party is trying to take a lot of the control that I personally feel needs to stay with the local. But I think it's, I think it'll be, it'll be fine tonight, so.
I just wanna make a comment. I hope that people get out and come to vote because.
Yeah.
We were stuffing envelopes one. I don't know, I mean.
Tell them.
We just.
One in the morning?
Like a machine. And I left, and we still had a whole bunch to go, and it was kinda late when I left. And so I, lots of work has gone into doing this, and I like the idea because you know your vote's gonna count, because we are, as a neighbor watching other together, I kinda like that idea.
Yeah, with the precinct boundaries so different now and kinda confusing, we felt like we needed to send out a letter. We've sent out emails. We've done everything we can to try and get the word out to help people find out where they're meeting and what precinct they're in, so.
Anyway, well, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Very good. Moving on to number eleven. All right, this next item, item number eleven, is consideration and approval of the Moab to Monument Valley Film Commission Annual Payment to Grand County. Sorry about the order there.
That's okay, no worries. Yes, so we are, I'm asking that we process this invoice for ten thousand dollars that will cover two years, twenty-three and twenty-four, to be paid to Grand County for support of the Moab to Monument Valley Film Commission. So, um, we, uh, this is money well spent. I work with Bega, who's the commissioner, film commissioner there. And I think she, you know, although we are not apprised of all of the filming that's done, we do benefit from her being in that position, and, and hopefully more things will come to San Juan County. So it's ten thousand or five thousand each year.
Okay, commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Approved by Commissioner Adams.
A second.
Uh, second by Commissioner Stubbs. Any other comments or questions, Commissioner Adams?
I wanna thank the Film Commission. They gave me an Oscar this year.
Yep, they did, they did.
For helping.
Well deserved, though.
And we got, um, we got the film incentive renewed again this year.
Yes, yes, for two, what, two years, I think it is, yep.
Yeah, so I think that's a good trend, and hopefully they, we can keep that going anyway. It was a little embarrassing, but it was.
That's okay. We were just hoping you'd show up there, because we were in on, you know, getting you there. They said, can you get him here? I'm like, well, I'm not gonna be there, but. Oh, well, you're going out with a bang between Serta and the Film Commission. Exactly, that's awesome. I know. That's, uh, that's quite, quite well-deserved honor, though.
Awesome, okay. I think we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
That's three in favor, motion unanimous.
Awesome. Thank you very much for your support.
Moving on to number twelve. Okay, this one is consideration and approval of election liaison poll worker contract with Mary Ann Woody. Let's see, Lyman isn't here today. He's out running elections throughout Navajo Nation chapters, and so he's down south. This one here, let me get to it real fast, make sure I'm on the right, right item. Maybe not. Might be wrong in our thing. Yeah, it's not, totally not popping. So every year, you know, as we go through these election processes, we reach out to liaisons that connect, assist us in, um, translation services, just getting the election information out to the Native American population that we have throughout the county. It's kind of a standard contract that we use for all of the liaisons as we ramp up operations during this election time. The more that we have, the better dispersed we are throughout the county. They, we also assist them when it comes time for, um, as poll workers or just being interpretation services, so that individuals that come in that need those translation services, we have somebody available onsite during the election period, um, so that we can assist them. Commissioners, how'd you like to?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Stubbs, second by Commissioner Adams. Any comments or questions, commissioners? Being done, let's all vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's three in favor, uh, unanimous for passing. Uh, moving on to the next item, uh, number thirteen. Okay, this is consideration and approval of the cooperating agency request for the Lisbon Valley Mine Plan and Operation with the Bureau of Land Management. Originally, Nick was gonna offer this. He couldn't make it today, and so, um, he'd asked me to just fill in for him on this one. Lisbon Valley Miner, they're wanting to expand their operations out there at the mine site. To do that, they have to go through an environmental impact study. And BLM, oftentimes, we're asked to be a cooperating agency. As they go through the study, they reach out to the county. We're able to provide our input and recommendations as well through this process. And so this is just the first step. It's really up to, to the BLM and in Lisbon Valley Mine to do the actual workload, but we're that cooperating agency that gets to see the information and weigh in prior to any public release of information. So this just kinda helps us steer things throughout the county and be that active participation with the BLM to go through this process. Okay, so this is just that agreement to do that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Adams.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Stubbs. Any comments or questions, commissioners? Uh, bing, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think it's really good to be part of those decisions and be, you know, be part of the process, and so.
Okay, all right, then, let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's three in favor, um, approved. Moving on to our next item. Okay, this one here is consideration and approval of the Health and Human Services Empower Emergency Response Outreach Individual Data Set Signature Letter by Grant, our Director of Public Health.
Hello, commissioners.
Hello, good morning.
Thanks for reviewing this with me here. This is an opportunity to access some potentially sensitive data, but also important data in the, in case there's an emergency. So the situation here that we're talking about is people who are reliant on medical or assistive electrical equipment, devices, you know, things like dialysis, oxygen services, uh, I have a little bit of a list there. Things that might cause prolonged power outages. We want to, there's a potential, because of the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services data, that we, we could find out, again, only if there is an emergency, where these people are. And then as public health, uh, work with our respective agencies, emergency medical services, et cetera, to get the right help to those people if needed, if there's a concern about, again, a prolonged outage, something like that. Um, and you can see in the, um, this is a letter that, um, if we have, if I have your support, I would sign this. You can see that in the first attachment. List the things that we would have in place, security things to, to make sure that personally identified, identifiable information, protected health information is secure. But then also making sure that we have that capacity to respond quickly and help our partners respond quickly. And has an attachment with info sheet about how that's being used, mapping, things like that, so we can really, um, get a sense of where people are and what their situation, what their needs are, and respond quickly.
And I think it facilitates, you know, quick response, you know, you're trying to figure out what's what, when it's happening, we kinda hard to do so.
So there's no funding attached to this. This is just enabling us to have permission to do this, to access the data when it's appropriate. So like I said, my understanding is that, uh, this is under my authority as health officer, local health officer, but I did, since it is a sensitive, sensitive data, I wanted to run it by you all. Um, hopefully with the, you know, Brittany Ivans checking it from a legal perspective. And then if, if it makes sense to you all, um, I can sign it and we can get that permission in place. Any other, any comments or questions, though, yeah?
Comments or questions?
No, I don't get.
How do we want to move with this request, commissioners?
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Adams.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Stubbs. Uh, we don't have any other questions, so we'll go and take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's three in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Moving on to number fifteen. Okay, number fifteen is consideration and approval of the Architectural Contract for the San Juan County Public Safety Building Remodel Project Design and Construction Administration Services with AJC Architects. Currently, the total contract, um, total on here is based off of the estimates back in twenty twenty-two. So I would anticipate that this will be amended here in the future as we refine some of the construction costs and get updated numbers from contractors. But right now, you're looking at one, one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that architectural services and construction administration for this project. This kinda kicks us off, um, then we can start working with the architects on the design. We will, you know, establish a team with our facilities director and, um, the sheriff's office, county corrections officer that does the jail there. I've also reached out to the state to inform them, since we do have the courts also in that building. They also wanna participate, um, in the design of the spaces up there so that we meet, um, the state's requirements for the actual courthouse side of it. We'll get as many players involved as we can and then just start working on the design. And the next step in this process, now that we have the, the architect, um, we'll be releasing a RFP with their assistance, um, to get a contractor in here to help us during the design process, um, so that we marry the architect and the contractor, um, through this process to help us refine the construction cost totals, but more importantly, stay within the budget that we've been, um, provided for, uh, from our CIB loan and grant for this project.
Examples of them, a facility makes it look so inviting.
Yeah, they do.
But you know, it is, um, how they talk about, it's just not a, a place to keep people in, but it's also a place to give hope.
Yep.
You know, and I like that concept. I, I wonder about all those glass windows. It's nice to have all that light. But can they push tables? I don't know, I was just thinking. Uh, but, but it's really nice. It looks really, really, while they send, it's really nice. And, and sometimes you forget that when they're designing, you think it's just the, the building, but they had to design wiring, plumbing, all the, you know, where things are gonna go, and so it's intense.
Modern technology.
Now you can see why it is so.
Mac, how many cells are there gonna be there? We increasing the number of cells or not?
Yes, in the initial feasibility study, we had an increase of beds that we'd be able to, um, reach out to the state and re-contract with for more, um, state inmates. Uh, but also, if you remember during, our, we, we had a commission tour. We should probably do another one again.
Yeah.
Get your commissioner, the new commissioners in. During our tour, they had a separation of the female population and the male population, and that separation was literally a curtain in the hall. You're starting to see just across the nation, a lot more females that are, that are convicted and, um, need of incarceration, that are pregnant. Uh, so we just needed to upgrade those facilities with it. And so you have better separation and segregation of the population in our feasibility, but we will get into the design and figure out total beds that we can expand to. We already have some beds that were giving, given to us that, um, another county jail or another facility, they were getting upgraded beds. And so, um, John had reached out to them, said, hey, we want, we want some of these beds. We'll be able to utilize them. So we have some additional beds that have, we've already been able to, to get our hands on. But during the expansion, I can't really tell you X amount of beds yet until we get through, just to see what we can fit in the spaces that are designed. Um, we have to expand the courtroom. The courtroom, um, itself has been pretty adequate for them, but what it doesn't have is as a security the state is requiring.
So we only have one courtroom?
So we'll have the same, it'll be hidden expansion of that courtroom over there, but better, um, offices, staff, staff facilities itself, better judges' chamber, little bit safer as far as, um, you know, the state has been really big on protecting their judges from active shooter situations. So a little bit better access in there. We also have, during COVID, we had a lot of the courts migrated to virtual. And so the ability to have, have those virtual conversations from our inmates that are private and secured, but also court-related virtual participation as well in there. So there's a space that was kind of carved out in our bubble diagram for kind of having more virtual participation in there. And it also gives the inmates an opportunity to visit families that are further away in the county. They can have that virtual dialogue and still be in a, a secure space.
Well, it looks like between the design team and the consulting team, there's probably twenty people involved.
There are a lot of people.
And, um, I'm just wondering, you know, we had a problem with the roof leaking. Are we gonna still have a flat roof, or are we gonna have a reasonable roof?
So, I'll be flat and reasonable. But we do, so one of the processes that we have them participating is, during the feasibility study, they did an analysis, and the team that they're bringing on was part of that initial analysis. So they go through and look at the mechanical, the engineering, um, the systems themselves, kinda give a, a quick brush stroke of what they think would have to happen. Now, as we hire this, this architect with our consultants, they bring the consultants in and reanalyze the building. The building, you know, for years, just on the brick itself, um, that needs to be re-tuck pointed. So some of the brick is starting to weep moisture through the brick itself. And so they're gonna have to analyze the whole envelope of the building plus the roof, uh, to see what we can do to fix and mitigate some of that. The, uh, upstairs, it was interesting, is, is I went with maintenance, just a tour of the facility, to try to figure out what we needed to do to make improvements. There were a lot of buckets in there, you know, catching water, and we gotta get away with from that. In the laundry room, there were buckets, you know, to catch the water when it rains. The walls in the wintertime just condensate. And so there's just moisture running down the walls, and it's just not a healthy environment for whether it's our staff or any individuals.
Put a slope on that roof.
Do something with it.
As cheap as they can put that.
Membrane.
A membrane thing that ends up leaking anyway.
Absolutely, yep. Membrane roofs are hard, um, and especially here.
Golf course wouldn't leak and now it's leaking.
Yeah, it blew up, yeah, that was a difficult one and so. And a lot of it too is just managing the project, so at the end of the day, you have the proper warranties. And then also the maintenance staff understands how to maintain it properly so that, you know, they're not sticking things up on the roof. That are gonna penetrate the membrane and so it's just being a little bit smarter with our building. But they will go through and analyze it, then they'll take, you know, our budget and try to mirror those two. It's okay, can we put a pitch through on here? One of the concepts during the feasibility study was actually putting staff up on a third level. Since we have to redo the elevator anyways, it makes sense if we can punch through and and put employees up on a third level there. That's a little bit more affordable on a stick frame rather than a brick building. And so we've got to analyze that with the engineers to see if it's load capable. And then so that, if we're able to go up to another level for administration. Then that's gonna require a different roof structure, a different roof system.
Membrane roofs are very expensive.
They're very expensive, but they're time timely when when you maintain it right, maintain it properly. But you know what I found here, the difficulty here in San Juan, we have a a similar flat roof out at Cal Black Airport. And we cannot get a contractor to come out there and and be responsive to us on leaks. Or even just a a replacement, we looked at replacing the roof out there, there, we just can't get them here. And so they're bringing them from up north to fix these membrane roofs. Well, that's super expensive to get somebody out of Salt Lake. They do, they're, yeah, they're definitely a challenge.
It's not feasible.
It is no longer like Shawshank Redemption where you can put that tar up on there and give them a beer if they do something good. To to re-tar it, but they've gotten out of that whole process. But we definitely need to look at that roof structure to see what we can do to fix it and make it so it has some life and longevity to it.
You got an architectural contract before you, commissioners, how would you like to move?
I make a motion we approve.
Motion by Commissioner Adams.
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Stubbs. Any other questions before we take a vote? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, it's three in favor, motion carries to approve. Moving on to item sixteen.
Okay, item sixteen, let me get through all this contract. Part of that is redacted in there, one in the RFP, just so you're aware. And companies can ask to redact their information so that we don't give them. With other people, but on this one here, we've got the consideration and approval of a general lease and settlement agreement. For San Juan County and San Juan County Sheriff's Office. This document too has has been redacted.
I was, can I say, kind of look like those documents that comes from the government?
Comes from the government, because of the sensitive nature of the information in this contract. The contract still does have to come before you for approval. The settlement agreement for this employee that we were able to settle on is eighty two thousand. Five hundred dollars to to finalize and and you're all aware, we've had the executive sessions. So you were updated of of what is all behind.
Remind us how much of that was provided by USIP.
So USIP pays a portion of this, I believe it's half of it. I'd have to look, but they are participating in this. And so if we go to court, and that was one of the things that USIP had advised us, if we go to court. San Juan County are on the hook for a hundred percent of it. If we settle.
USIP was really sensitive to what the need was. And they were willing to participate, which I think is a really good thing.
Okay, we've got a settlement agreement before you commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Stubbs, second by Commissioner Adams. Any additional questions or comments, commissioners? Seeing or hearing none, all those in favor? It's three in favor, motion approved, motion carries to approve the settlement. Agreement. Moving to number seventeen.
Seventeen is consideration and approval of the cooperative agreement for the Utah State University Extension Services for San Juan County. Each year, they come to us and you approve their budget, participating in their program. This is a federal law, a federal requirement that an extension service be. At every county throughout the state of Utah or throughout all of the US. Utah has picked USU to be that extension services for all counties throughout the state. And so this agreement is something that we continue to to see and need to renew and approve. The last contract was done twenty years ago, they wanted a kind of a twenty-year contract. With the new agreement, but to me, you lose sight of, you know, kind of why we're here, why they're here. And why we need to participate every year in funding their budgets and the commitments behind it. And so I put this one at more at a five-year contract instead, so every five years we'll come to the commission for this. So that twenty years is just a long, long time to not not have an agreement. That's before everybody's eyes as commissioners and so. This one, we participate, we appreciate the extension services and all that they offer our residents throughout the county. They are so engaged, actively engaged in in a lot of the things that we do. We call on them, you know, for not only just to teach our citizens. But to participate in our youth programs here, our agricultural programs, they are the go-to. And the remarkable employees, remarkable staff. But it is something every year that that we do have to fund and participate in with county taxpayer funding. With our budget and services, you know, there's some future plans that they have, which is why I like the five-year commitment here. We do provide them space free of charge, we provide their IT, county vehicles. And kind of funding as well for personnel. Super supportive of us and kind of helps helps us help citizens out throughout the county. And they're they're from top to bottom, their program, there's no, there's there's no borderline for them. You know, we're super excited with what they're doing down at the the school, down in Monument Valley and the efforts down there.
The four H programs.
Four, well, the agriculture one, like we keep on trying to anticipate or to. Get her to bring the peaches that with all. That whole line of peaches DNA that she's tracked throughout the county and and surrounding areas from.
They're little peaches.
Have a whole mountain, but the one that tastes like honey, yeah, we look forward to that. So with the contract, I should have put that provision in.
We can say we're gonna support that with the idea that we need a basket of those peaches.
Peaches, that's exactly, it's a condition of the agreement, every year, peaches and cream.
I see Brittany's a signatory on this too, Brittany, you're okay with everything? Make a motion we approve.
Motion by Commissioner Adams to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Stubbs. One, one comment, well. An inquiry more, I'd like to make on this contract is, what are the? What are the? Is there any content in here regarding the social work program? Or the licensing thereof of the program, is there any language in here?
No, but we can, I can ask her what programs they have available for that, I'm off the top of my head, I can't think of anything.
I I bring this up because I'm gonna stick my neck out here. I did graduate from U of U, so hopefully my comments don't backfire. The modality that the college is currently utilizing. For licensure of social workers at this moment for our county is. I think we should review it because mind-body bridging and the modality with that is. We need more of a connection to our local mental health crises. And the needs that exist there for some of the diagnoses that are coming up. So we had this issue with uh, uh, social media and the impact it has on children. I know, I know that's there. But then we also now have families who are struggling in the most rural parts of our counties. Because of lack of employment and and various other things. One big component probably for that is, yeah. The limitation of services to them. And I think yesterday in a discussion that was held, there was some. Talk about how families are experiencing compounding. Compounding things in their lives. And those compounding things that parents and families experience are passed down to their children. Who in turn are impacted for, because of their efforts in school and not being able to be successful. Uh, students. And so. My point is, if the school can reevaluate that. Licensing program to be more responsible to the needs of the areas they serve. It would be huge, I think. Instead of imposing. An out-of-county, more like an overall initiative for the college kind of a thing, if that makes sense. And I don't know if this is the place to express that, but.
Yeah, let me, let's talk to Reagan, as she wasn't able to make it and we just put it on the agenda for. For, but let's talk to her and just see, cause I know a lot of the four H program itself is, you know, designed to get. That empowerment and to help, you know, kids and students that participate in that program. To help with their leadership skills and reaching out to healthy communities. And being an active member in society through that four H program. And so let's work with her and see if there's an opportunity for for that program to be structured.
Very good.
You know, as we meet throughout the year with USU itself and and the president of USU here. I think there's some ways that we can talk to him as well, along outside of the extension services. But just to see if there's something that they can help foster as well.
Right, I think as we are moving forward with our criminal justice. Center for our county, what I'm just kind of highlighting will surface better. And so our objectives will become more clearer and those objectives can only become more clear if we work together. Not only our county mental health, but UNHS mental health, probably public health. And the schools, I mean, a lot of my comments stem from the SHARP survey that the district was able to do. And how those results are are there that they need attention. And so if we can do this together concertedly, we'd be successful. But I do support the the effort, so I'll also. If if we're gonna vote now, that's what I'm alluding to, let's all vote, all in favor? All three of us are in favor. And so motion carries to approve, thanks.
Item number eighteen is consideration and approval of the draft letter to the Navajo Nation President Nigren. For various topics for discussion, Commissioner Harvey, if you want to present this. Sure.
So commissioners, this letter is a request to the Navajo Nation. President Boo Nigren, who recently, I think he's been in office as long as we have for the past year now. So his administration is now, is now organized and structured. And we do have various things we'd like to to discuss with him. Of course, they're listed here in in our letter. One of the things that I think we should include, which I mentioned in our meeting with the district. Is gonna be CPS, Child Protective Services. For the Monizuma Creek, Ana, Monument Valley, Navajo Mountain Community. Because I know that the state has been funding that position. For the nation and the nation needs to follow through with establishing a CPS worker. For all the communities in in the southern portion of the reservation in our county. And maybe there's ways that we can solve that with with the nation. And it only enhances our ability to be more. More involved with the the children and victims and families down south. With our Criminal Justice Center that we're we're putting in place here. So commissioners, this is a an ask in conjunction with delegate Curtis Yanito. He's going to sign this and submit it in our behalf and and he will work with his staff to schedule a meeting. That might be best for the president of the nation to to give us time to meet with him. He might come here, so there there's the hope that he'll come out and visit us. Ultimately, I think this is needed and and it'll it'll benefit our communities. And so I'd like to ask your support in approving this letter. And let's move forward in in working with the the nation to solve some some outstanding priorities. Commissioner Adams, motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Stubbs. Any other questions, commissioners?
I just have a couple of comments, the first comment, uh, this is really good because I think. Another hard part of being a. Commissioner and it feel like we had to help. And we represent that part of the Navajo Nation that's in San Juan County. But it's also, I feel powerless sometime because they have so much need. And they talk to me about their needs, but there's nothing I can do. And so it'd be nice to have where we can talk and see what can you do and what we can do. And together we can move forward, I mean, there are people there that are professional. Lots of those people have gone to my program and now they have two master degrees and they make good money. And they want a good home, they want all, they want all these things that they cannot have in their assets. But we cannot help with that other than, you know, keep this with them and be nice to have a. A uni- united plan where we can work together. And there's other things I have, sometime I have question, what happened to the Headside Program? Rural Utah Project, I mean, no, I mean, rural Utah Child Development from Price. You have multiple Headside Programs. And and I know personally, I would go visit them in like, they have amazing programs. The one in Mario Valley there by the other side, USU, that you go around the hospital, hospital and they had a nice program. Also, Halchida had an amazing program they have. It was combination of a program that was for the grandmas, the grandmas got paid for coming helping with the children. They're the ones that wipe their nose and held them in the laps and the Arkansas stuff. And it was an amazing program and when I come, I came back and just only one left and it. And it was an amazing program and when I come, I came back and just only one had left and it's kinda. It's the one in Navajo Mountain and that. They had good workers, they were good. Amazing people and I I just have question what happened to the headside program. And it's so much so important nowadays because you don't start. Kindergarten, I mean kindergarten is not learning the ABC, they are reading in kindergarten. And so if those children don't have a. A foundation that I already start behind, I know each other's school have a preschool, but. It's unlimited to a certain. Um number of students and so I it'd be nice to get some answers and questions like that and I'm glad that if we get that. Be able to communicate with each other and. Start seeing some of the stuff back or at least get answered why, why it's not there anymore.
Yeah, I agree.
The Navajo Nation gets a lot of money from the federal government, they get hundreds of millions of dollars. And you travel around in Arizona, Kanda, Chinley, some of these places, they're growing, they're really growing. And they have nice facilities, they have nice housing facilities, tremendous medical facilities. Um you know, we just don't see that kind of spending. For Utah Navajos.
That's right.
And and we never have. But th- there's things happening on the Navajo Nation in a big way. And and they, you know, they they get a tremendous amount of money. And you know, I don't know how you whine in the right way to get them to recognize. That there are members of the Navajo Nation that live in Utah. And they deserve, you know, better quality life than what they're getting. From the Navajo Nation government, uh you know, I know San Juan County does what they can, but. We can't match what they what they receive from the federal government and. What they're doing in that in those Arizona communities, so. Anything we can do to to try and. Get the Navajo Nation President Vice President to recognize what the needs are in in Utah, I I'm hundred percent behind.
Very good. I don't think even the president, the Navajo Nation President has a Utah. Uh appointed uh delegate anymore, I think. Yeah, and and maybe that's something we can bring to their attention.
Is that used to be Filford?
Used to be Filford, um so there's no Utah.
Hasn't been replaced.
So that that's, maybe that's what we need, is someone that works directly with us moving forward, so. Very good, Commissioner.
Well, I don't know, Filford made much progress, he disappointed, but.
We need someone who will.
Yeah.
Alright, commissioners, thank you so much, uh all those in favor.
Aye.
That's three in favor unanimous, um moving on to the final item, number nineteen.
Okay, this is for a public hearing for consideration and approval of the ordinance establishing. The San Juan County Consolidated Fee Schedule in accordance with Utah Code seventeen dash fifty-three.
Motion, we go into public hearing.
Motion to move to public hearing by Commissioner Adams.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Stubbs.
Need some advice. Okay.
Alright, all those in favor moving into public meetings, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's three in favor. We are now in public meeting mode at twelve fourteen PM.
Okay, so with this ordinance, it capitalizes all of the the fees. That the county can charge for services um with each department, each elected. Uh officials department as well. Uh throughout these tables, we had presented this to you in work session. Took your feedback and made sure everything was incorporated in here and put it in just one um ordinance structure. So that um with exceptions where where they were considered, where they needed to be. Uh within this this ordinance and so. A lot of our fees um have remained the same in here, there are those changes that we discussed during work session. Uh but this finalizes and encapsulates everything per codification of our fees and services that we provide. Uh to the general public when when it's needed for each department. In the future, kind of how this will act is if there's a fee that needs to be changed in here, then. We can go through and amend those fees from time to time. Uh when I originally came to the county looking for a fee schedule online, we never had had. A formal adoption of the fee schedule, there had been a couple of departments that that have had in the past, like the surveyor's office had one. The recorder's office did their own, but outside of that, we've never had an official ordinance that laid out the fees of the county and so. This is it. We had asked the department heads to look at neighboring counties. To see what fees is fees that they charge in neighbor neighboring counties. I know like for example, our planning fees that we have that are charged to individuals for plan review, things like that, we had looked at. You know, Kane County, Amory County, Grand County, to try to figure out what their fees are. To try to to come up to a reasonable standard that's across the board through other counties um. Some of those entities that are departments that have boards, they've taken it to their boards and those bodies. For recommendations as well and you've seen that during um the work session meeting, so. This puts everything together, it also gives um the ability to appeal a fee or. People don't like the fee that they're being charged for a specific item on here, they can uh come to me for to request for. A waiver of that fee or come to the commission, the commission can waive fees as well on here and so we kind of just created the structure of how. Um we would charge, but also putting all of the costs in one location, so online. Individuals will be able to pull up our fee schedule for any service that is here. That we charge for our our citizens for those services.
Alright, commissioners, uh. Alright, do we have any comments from the public? Any questions? Anyone online who wants to make a comment on on the proposed fees for the county?
Mac is online.
I'll make a motion, we go out of public hearing.
Okay, hearing none, um accept the motion by Commissioner Adams to move out of public meeting.
And I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Stubbs. Alright, um all those in favor of moving out of public meeting? Say aye.
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 Aye, that's three in favor. We are now out of.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the fee schedule that was that we have considered in our public hearing.
Motion by Commissioner Adams to approve.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Stubbs to approve. Any other comments or questions, commissioners? Hearing or not seeing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three in favor, uh. Fee schedule has now been approved.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Either was I was dreaming because I was reading the stuff late, but there's something missing, there's something that. There was another contract that we're gonna review, one that had extension for seventy-five years. Did you have that one? The what?
One of the items that are on the consent agenda?
Oh, that's where it was. I was just thinking. That, oh good, I know, I was just thinking.
It's the amendments.
Okay, yeah, I was just thinking, we are talking about something that none of us will be alive when it ends.
Hear the STDs, yeah.
Okay.
I can do my best to clarify that. Would you like me to?
Are we able to move back?
So you can ask it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So this came as a surprise to me as well. The state even gave a presentation to me and other local health officers yesterday about this, they're calling it evergreen. Um, oh dear, I forgot that, it's in my notes, uh evergreen amendment, something like that. And the idea is it's something where we're, the idea is that we're gonna be doing this ongoing, but. Year to year or every five years is how often the funding will be established. But just the general agreement is gonna be evergreen, they call it. And so they they had this kind of, I don't know if arbitrary is the right word, but as far out as they could put that date there. Meaning that it's evergreen, it'll just keep going, but the funding is is not not set. That's the part that we have to review. So.
I don't remember. They be alive, maybe it's the baby that was here.
Yeah, so the idea is we probably won't entirely eliminate sexually transmitted diseases, we'll on be always be working on that. Um though I'm gonna hope that technology might help us with that at some point. We've eliminated smallpox, right? Maybe we can do that for others.
It's coming back.
So.
Coming back as you have people that are not vaccinated.
Wow, so anyways, thank you for noticing, I even at late at night, that's an odd one, I agree. But I will, I will have more information about that. I don't think there's a a risk right now for signing it. But uh they are gonna present more information in my meetings next week about this.
Just gotta chuckle more.
Thank you, right?
Amendments for the.
The state has a sense of humor, maybe, I'm not sure. Thank you.
When I didn't hear anything, I thought, maybe I dream about it, cause I'm.
Yeah, consent agenda, that's why. I didn't mean to slide it under anything, but.
December two thousand ninety-nine.
Yeah.
I won't be here.
Right.
Thank you.
Moving on to our commission reports, uh commissioners, uh now's the time to. Give your updates and and any important information, uh I'd like to start if that's okay. We don't have to do it out of order. Um I'd like to take this my time to. Uh recognize a recent commissioner who also has served on the San Juan Counseling. Uh Mental Health Board, I believe from what I understand, he started in two thousand eight, right Tammy? Two thousand seven, so he's been on the board for for quite some time as well as being in a commissioner. Um yesterday I witnessed the reelection of officers for the Mental Health Board. And it looks like um Commissioner Stevens is not, he he finished his tenure. And uh he's been the longest serving and he's also been a commissioner and it's just something the board felt. Would be important to just recognize him and to to tell him thank you. And so I think in behalf of all of us as commissioners, we'd like to express our deep appreciation for his work. Um and just recognize him for his service and for the time. And from what I understand, he's never missed a meeting, he's always been there. Uh always been a huge support to uh the Mental Health Director, Tammy, and and those before, so. Um that's my first item I just wanted to share with you. Um second item I wanted to just mention is on Friday. Uh the food banks in Montezuma Creek. And in Monument Valley, they will have their open house celebrations, there's gonna be a blessing. Uh from a traditional medicine man in Montezuma Creek and Monument Valley, there's a schedule established. Um for Montezuma Creek, uh the the uh open house begins at. Uh hmm ten AM and then in Monument Valley, it starts at two PM. So commissioners, if you have time, you're welcome to to be my guest. Um I did confirm my attendance, but doesn't hurt that you show up and hang out with me if you can. Uh Mac, you're welcome to come if you've got time, um e- even just for Montezuma Creeks, but. I think Utah Food Bank's been huge, um it's just another new facility in Montezuma Creek that. That's really showing the growth that's happening for for Montezuma Creek. You got a family dollar, you got a food bank, um looking forward to, oh, and then we're, I heard we're gonna have the state. Do the roundabout down there this summer.
Yes.
And so there's.
Bit has been released online.
It'll be pretty, pretty nice looking pretty soon in Montezuma, so. So anyhow, that that's a huge, huge thing, I think, uh progress for the community in Montezuma. And Monument Valley and a lot of the community members are looking forward to. To the food that comes to them, you know, some of them depend on that, so very grateful for for the Utah Food Bank and for. Commission for supporting that in the past. Um.
So you mentioned you had that on Friday?
Friday.
Okay, I had a notification and email that the ribbon cutting, so you have the ribbon cutting and then the open house? Cause I have the ribbon cutting on my calendar from any email.
Right, it's a ribbon cutting, so it's not a, it's just a ribbon cutting, I'm sorry, yeah.
I have that for tomorrow.
Is that tomorrow, the sixth, okay.
Yes.
My goodness, yeah, I can tell him, yeah.
Okay, so there's the one at ten AM.
Ten AM is Montezuma.
And then.
And then two PM.
Valley.
At two PM.
Is the Monument Valley facility built?
Uh from from what I understand, it is, yeah.
Wow.
Maybe it's by the school, so just a ribbon cutting, I guess. Yeah, I thought it was Friday, I looked at my.
Okay, so yeah, so I got it for tomorrow, I am, I'll be in Saint George.
Okay.
Through airport conference, cause those are fun.
Yeah, I I'm glad you said so, I would've showed up on Friday, no one's there, like, what? Where's the ribbon? So it is tomorrow, sorry, that's, thanks Mac. Alright, tomorrow ten and then Monument Valley two, if you got time. Okay, alright, um. I think that's really the only two major announcements I have, Commissioner, so I'll defer to whoever wants to. Do the report next.
You're pointing at each other. Um I uh also wanna add about uh former Commissioner Lynn Steven. He was also in the cemetery board for many, many years and. He, I I think he kinda broke me in. And some responsibilities. Um he was in charge of the big celebration of the Fourth of July and he called me to be a chair of the parade. And I told him to give me a couple of days to pray and and I have wonderful feeling from that. About being Patrick. Especially in in a new country and so I'm grateful. But I have some funny story about him too because. Um he's a general. And so I, we had the parade and we have McDonald um. Paul McDonald's dad, he was in a truck and he announced who was coming. And we're supposed to give him a list, well, my helpers, they were supposed to do the list, we were trying to. Make it to a hundred. A floats or whatever and and so everybody was working all night and somebody forgot to print the list. And the parade is starting and the only thing I could do was to go set stamp next to the truck and tell. Um uh McDonald. Who was coming, asking what was what and after. Um and I was using a four wheeler, I never drove a four wheeler, but it was fun going up and down the parade and all this stuff anyway. And so uh after. You know, you can tell that he was a little disappointed, but I couldn't explain all the situation that happened. So I thought, I just wanna take the four wheeler and ride up. And the sunset, but we got to work many, many years with that um parade, it was just um. A good thing and I know he is my fan, I know that when he knew I was running, I, it was good to. To get his support and I really have good feeling toward him. I just wanted to know today, just to um mention our youth. Our youth have been doing lots of sports, have been in tournaments, they go to Arkansas. Amazing thing, they do amazing thing, last night was Sterling's colors, I only got a few uh. Uh that can see who, you know, I don't have an idea who made it through, but just being a Sterling Scholar. You're a winner, things can open up, I have the privilege to be a mom of three Sterling Scholars. And it's hard work, this last hard work involved and so I wanna, and the same thing with sports, it takes. Getting up early and just keep going and sometimes um. We forget to the best to recognize that those things are amazing things that students are doing and. I know the governor was um watching the game of our. Girls from down south, the governor has a friend that he gets phone call and get told those things and. Commissioner Adam said that was the governor, he's watching the girls play, our girls play, oh good, and anyway, so. I just wanna congratulate them and also we had a bunch of the youth, like I said last meeting up at the Capitol and. From San Juan County, it was so nice to see them and and how excited they are, so I wanted to be a dentist, now I wanna be a politi. I wanna be there on the floor, I mean, they were so excited about this stuff and so anyway. Um this Friday was the last Friday coming home from the legislature, been going there on Tuesday and coming back on. On Friday, it went by fast this time, last year was a little bit more tense for me, was the first year going there. And getting used to those long, long stairs and I was glad when I discovered the. Elevator, anyway, so um but it was nice to be um. This year to know a little bit more of what's going on and having. My husband have better health this year than last year, I was kind of a, it was a little double stress with a new job and then. Having him not feeling well, um it is kind of a a interesting kind of a. Thing to see how everybody, like I said early, how everybody goes side with hope, with hope of of some help and then. In the end, we all kind of a little bit worn out and feeling sad and maybe some of the things didn't go as well, but. We did benefited um from having. A new hospital, I know Commissioner Adam was quiet lots of times and I thought I wasn't sure if he, so I mentioned to Mac. Adam's kind of quiet lately, he said, well, he's just thinking really fast about all this stuff, all the dynamic of the of the hospital. Um and it was. Was um emotional to see it up and down and and the realization when they opened the doors. And people walking out and they had smile on their face that they saw us, it was a kind of a nice thing to um. To get to. See people happy for us, cause sometimes it's hard hard to be happy when you're not getting what you want, but somebody else is. Anyway, so um this um I'm happy to be home for more than one reason and. Just get to go around the place in 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 our county, be able to contact people on. On Monday, I I went to, just today I went visit that what's gonna be a new. Children Justice Center and it was just nice to go and see there and. And just get to see the building and all this possibility, so that was nice to do that and um. So today I'm here, on on Wednesday, I'm planning to go to the food bank, I have a whole bunch of grapefruit. That we brought from Arizona, that's gonna take it to the food bank, so if you guys want grapefruit, go to the food bank and um. And also I'm gonna go to the um school board uh meeting, it's at three o'clock and and blending. And. And I'll just gonna continue to visit, we have some some other projects that are under making with some of um. They're too soon to speak up about it, I guess, and then, um but I'm excited for that and I'm grateful for. The support of um our team, we are a team and and it's nice to to. To feel the support, sometimes it's a little bit hard when we we do have a the freedom of speech and people speak. And it's good thing, I live in a country where we couldn't speak and I'm glad, even though it's sometime, it's not what I wanna hear, but it's nice and I'm. Grateful for that privilege that we have to have with speech.
Well, I haven't been doing much.
You resting for all the runs you have done.
I was glad to see the best looking Commissioner Jamie get on TV.
Right here in headlights, probably.
Yeah, he he did a great job, probably. They got interviewed, we all got interviewed by Ben Winslow at Channel thirteen and. They, he was excited that we got the money for the new hospital and wanted to know how each one of us felt about that and. Then I watched TV that night and there was Jamie from the center.
I couldn't stay awake, I mean, I have been getting up early, um cause I'm doing a a class called Leadership. It's a class and I've just been. Doing homework lately, late in that night, I couldn't, so when I were in, there's no way to rewind the TV, so I asked Brian, what did you see? I said, yeah, I woke up about right after the news, I guess. So I I never saw it, so.
Well, I think it it's a testament that. When you have teamwork, you have three commissioners working all for the same purposes that. It pays off and so. We're really grateful for the governor and and his team for helping us and the legislators. We met with and.
And the Commissioners, their support, the other.
The Commissioners, the UAC, it was a great team effort to get that done and. Now we'll just stay home and rest up from all the all the trips to Salt Lake, so. Um I know we have a UAC meeting coming up at the end of of April. It would go to St. George. Couple of the meetings coming up this spring, WIR in Yosemite National Park and looking forward to those and. And um that's about all I have to report.
Alright Commissioners, yeah, thank you Commissioner Adams for your work, man, I didn't know what I was walking into on on Thursday. We'll go ahead and uh move to our final item, the most controversial item of all adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Adams.
And I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Stubbs, we are adj, all those in favor. Aye, we are now adjourned twelve thirty-eight, thank you Commissioners.
Thank you for coming. It's nice to have some faces to look at for.
That are alive.
We'll see you, bye.
Thanks Tammy.